Okay, I want to call to order the Tuesday, February 4th, 2020, meeting of the Iroquois County Board of Commissioners. And at this time, I would ask everyone to please go to the Lord in silent prayer and specifically ask for the protection, the provision, and the blessings of the citizens of this county. You'll please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Well, it's great to see so many people out on this beautiful evening. Just a point of indication, if it may be a lengthy meeting, if you need a restroom, we do have two in the corners. You do not have to go downstairs. They're right up here. Right now, Beth, if you would please view any adjustments to the agenda.
Chairman Mallory, we do not have any adjustments on this agenda.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda as published?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Norman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. Motion carries unanimously. At this time, we have a presentation of a resolution, a request for a resolution from the Fire Services and Emergency Management Department for adoption of a resolution recognizing Ebenezer Volunteer Fire Department for improving their insurance rating from a Class 6.9 to a Class 4.9. And we have Mr. Kent Green that's present. If you would go ahead and tee this up for everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have with me Chief Whitlock from Ebenezer Fire Department. As you're all aware, we've spent several years investing in the fire service to lower insurance ratings, and in this case, the lower the rating, the better. So improving from a six to a four, all that doesn't mean much for residential property owners. It does impact commercial property owners somewhat. And it's very difficult to do this, so as we move forward, we believe we'll see other departments accomplishing that lowering of their rating, and it wouldn't have been possible without the funding provided by the board. So I appreciate your assistance with that.
Chief, great job. Please pass on our appreciation for all the time and effort that it takes to meet these stringent standards for the benefit of all our citizens, particularly those in your fire district.
Thank you, sir.
The resolution, I'll go ahead and read. A resolution of the Iroquois County Board of Commissioners recognizing and honoring the Ebenezer Volunteer Fire Department for achieving an improved insurance rating of Class 4/9, whereas the North Carolina Office of the State Fire Marshal helps insurance companies across the state set their premiums by evaluating local fire departments, and whereas OSFM ratings are based on a variety of measures having to do with almost every aspect of a fire department, from training to apparatus to water supply, and whereas the availability of water alone accounts for 40% of the rating, making it very difficult in areas without widespread fire hydrant systems to attain good ratings, and whereas many residential insurance and commercial insurance companies rely upon OSFM ratings, and whereas OSFM uses a fire suppression rating schedule and a public protection classification to analyze data collected from the system, and whereas in the PPC system, lower is better, and whereas lower ratings mean savings to residential and commercial property owners, and whereas only 22% of fire departments rated under the PPC have achieved a Class 5 rating, and whereas as of the last rating, the Harmony Volunteer Fire Department area --
Should say Ebenezer.
And it should say Ebenezer.
That's a typo.
The Ebenezer Fire Department area was a Class 6/9, and effective October 1, 2019, the PPC rating is lowered to Class 4-9. At this time, I would ask if there's a motion to approve the resolution.
Mr. Chairman, I would make the motion that we approve the resolution for Ebenezer Volunteer Fire Department for their Class 4.9 rating.
Motion by Vice Chairman Bowles. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Now, therefore, the Iroquois County Board of Commissioners resolves to recognize the hard work and dedication of the men and women of the Ebenezer Volunteer Fire Department and the consistently strong support of the community in achieving this improved rating to assist in lowering insurance costs to property owners throughout the service area. Passed and approved by the Iroquois County Board of Commissioners this fourth day of February 2020. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you'll please come up and take your signed copy. Commissioners to gather up behind. Congratulations.
Chief, we appreciate the hard work on your volunteers and full timers.
We do not have any appointments before the board this evening. We do have three public hearings. The first public hearing is a request from Jonathan Myers to rezone a parcel consisting of approximately .77 acres along Alcove Road adjacent to I-77 in the town of Porshal from Residential Agricultural RA to Residential Office RO. And Mr. Matthew Todd will tee that up.
Good evening to the board. The first request we have before us tonight is a rezoning. You can see it outlined in blue on the screen. It's surrounded by Mooresville's jurisdiction as far as the properties above Edgeway Drive and across the interstate. It's currently zoned residential, and the request is to zone it to RO, which is Residential Office. Staff supports this request. The 2030 Horizon Plan calls for this area to be corridor commercial. It's adjacent to 77, and RO traffic impact should not exceed road capacity. The planning board also voted nine to zero to support this request. You could see the land use plan showing it corridor commercial. Just an area of the property with some commercial uses in the area. There are still some residential uses. I think that's why they've requested the Residential Office. It does a better job of fitting into the existing residential area. Currently, there's a single-family home on the lot. I believe the plans are to use that home as an office, but again, they could, in theory, tear down this building and build a new office building. This is looking north on Alcove Road with the property on our left, looking at the sound barrier with the interstate on the other side, and looking south on Alcove Road. And I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding this request.
Any questions from commissioners?
Mr. Todd, there was no opposition to this from the planning board or citizens in that area?
We had no opposition show up at the planning board meeting, and we really did not receive any phone calls in opposition. Lot of phone calls asking about it, but no direct opposition.
Just wanting information.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Todd, is it correct that they are not asking for any utilities to be stretched to this particular piece of property from the town of Mooresville?
Correct. Correct. They plan on using the existing septic and well that's on the property.
Mr. Todd, what is the height restriction in a residential office?
To clarify from earlier, the height for this zoning district, if it's a house, which it currently is a house, is 35 feet. But if they did decide to tear down, they actually could build up to 50 feet. The key, though, is there's well and septic here. If they want, they're not going to be able to develop a 50-foot structure on a well and septic on a three-quarter of an acre lot. So at that point, they would be requesting water and sewer from the town, which would then lead to the annexation, and then they'd fall under whatever zoning district Mooresville applied for the property.
I think we know that's something like six stories.
Correct.
Any additional questions? Okay. Now, open the public hearing. I do not have anyone that has signed up to be heard on this matter, but I would inquire of anyone that is present, whether they'd like to be heard. Well, seeing and hearing none, I will close the public hearing and ask if there's a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would make the motion to approve the zoning map amendment and to make the finding that the approval is consistent with the adoption of the 2030 Horizon Plan and that the said approval is reasonable and in the public's interest and furthers the goals of the 2030 Horizon Plan because it is within the corridor commercial designation. It's adjacent to I-77 and other existing commercially-used properties, and the traffic impact should not exceed the road capacity.
Motion by Vice Chairman Bowles. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Now, I'll move on to a public hearing regarding a text amendment to the Land Development Code. Once again, Mr. Todd?
Yes, the Land Development Code has a specific section in it that regulates the height of structures in the vicinity of the Statesville Regional Airport. It's been in place for a number of years. A consultant originally helped develop it with the city of Statesville and the county. Over the years, amendments have been made to this section, and several years ago, the areas off the end of the runway seemed to get a little over-restrictive on the height regulations. They basically said you couldn't build anything taller than the elevation of the end of the runway. Obviously, once we got into that, that seemed a little too restrictive. It then was lifted to allow it to 50 feet. Again, we still ran into problems with that requirement as well. So in working with the consultant for the airport and the airport manager, we put together a text amendment to deal with this specific issue, and basically, if somebody is requesting to build a taller structure in this area, if they'll get a no-hazard determination issued by the FAA and also get written approval from the airport manager, then they could build the structure that they need to. Of course, they'd still have to meet all the other requirements in the code, but it would allow a little more flexibility on that height restriction. The planning board did vote unanimously to approve this request, and I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding it.
Any questions for Mr. Todd?
Again, no opposition by anyone?
No opposition.
Are there any plans submitted at this time for a structure, what you just described?
At this time, no.
Additional questions or comments? Now, open the public hearing. I do not have anyone who has signed up likewise to be heard on this matter, but I would inquire if anyone would like to be heard. Seeing and hearing none, I will close the public hearing and ask if there's a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the zoning text amendment and to make a finding that the approval is consistent with the adopted 2030 Horizon Plan and that said approval is reasonable and in the public interest and furthers the goals of the 2030 Horizon Plan because it aims to add flexibility based on industry experts regarding height requirements in the airport overlay.
Motion by Commissioner Howe. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Todd.
Thank you.
We now come to the main event, to conduct a public hearing and consider approval of a resolution in support of the Constitution of the United States and declaring Iroquois County as a constitutional rights protection county. To lead off, just to provide a little context, prior to our first meeting in January, which I think it was January the 7th, Commissioner Howe received a copy of a constitutional rights protection resolution from Suri County, and he shared that with us at our pre-agenda meeting, which is at 5 o'clock. By the way, everyone's always invited to our 5 o'clock pre-agenda meetings. Most of the time, they are rather technical issues brought by staff that we delve into, but they are a public meeting. And we discussed that briefly about what was contained therein, and we decided that we would refer it ultimately to our council for her review and to get back to us with an analysis about appropriate language and any kind of pros and cons. So we did that, and shortly thereafter, we received a proposed amendment or resolution by Sheriff Darren Campbell, which we added to the consideration of council, and we also, in the intervening time period, got copies of resolutions from several other counties to include Lincoln County and Davidson County. So with those resolutions and our own discussions we held with council, we have crafted a resolution for Iroquois County, as many other counties in North Carolina have likewise adopted, with the idea of being able to send a message to our legislators and our congressmen about the intent of this board in conjunction with the sheriff to urge them to safeguard our constitutional rights, all of them, as well as more particularly the Second Amendment rights to bear arms. That approach that we took was to not be exclusive relative to the Second Amendment because the First Amendment freedoms are the guts of what we all rely on for freedom of speech and freedom from the established religion of freedom of assembly, freedom of press. So those are really, there's not separate amendments that protect those, that are mostly in the public from time to time. But the Second Amendment is really there as guardian of the First Amendment. It's the enforcement mechanism at the end of the day that guards those First Amendment freedoms. The rest of the amendments to the Constitution deal primarily with due process-type protections for the rights of those who've been accused of criminal offenses. And then there ends up with the Tenth Amendment, of course, which reserves to the states all authorities and powers not specifically granted to the federal government. It's interesting to note that when the Constitution was crafted and submitted to the states for ratification in order to be adopted, it took three-quarters of the states to adopt it. And they met that number, but three states, Massachusetts and Virginia and New York, made that approval contingent on the passage of a Bill of Rights. North Carolina and Rhode Island refused to ratify the Constitution as it was proposed in 1789 because it did not contain a Bill of Rights, that first 10 amendments to the Constitution. When those amendments were subsequently submitted or crafted and submitted, North Carolina in 1789, I believe, 1790, passed it, and Rhode Island was the last to ratify the Constitution. The Constitution actually went into effect after the initial convention because it had three-quarters of support. But the Constitution as we really know it, with the Bill of Rights, was not adopted until later, and North Carolina was one of the two states that held out for that specific Bill of Rights. So what we do today here, what we want to do, is to affirm our support of all of our constitutional rights, and if you think of it as a funnel, that covers everything, but then focus in on our Second Amendment rights because north of our border in the state of Virginia, they have been embroiled in a lot of legislative mischief that is calling into question, you know, government's proper role in, you know, restricting our freedoms. I understand that all of our rights under the Constitution are not absolute. They have all been set, are subject to some limitations. Those limitations have to be carefully crafted, and they have to weigh out a number of factors, and that is done by the courts that ultimately determine whether those laws are constitutional or unconstitutional. This body is not a legislative body. We don't craft laws. We have two legislators here with us tonight, Senator Vicky Sawyer and Representative Jeff McNally. Their job is to sit in the legislature and pass laws. Unfortunately, in Virginia, their legislature has considered a number of unwise or unwelcome restrictions on Second Amendment rights, and whether they make it through, whether they're signed by the governor, time will tell. But I'm sure that all of those will be subject to immediate court challenges and scrutiny by the court system, which will go from a district court judge to the Court of Appeals for the Fourth Circuit, which sits in Richmond, and then I'm sure subsequently to the Supreme Court, if the Supreme Court determines that there's a reason to hear an appeal. If they disagree or think there's enough of an issue, they'll grant certiorari and bring it up. If they don't, they let the lower court ruling stand. And so that's our process. So our concern, which is expressed in the resolution, is to urge our legislators to use all of their power and authority to protect our Second Amendment rights and to protect our constitutional rights, all of them writ large. At the end of the day, the ballot box determines what is going to happen in North Carolina. What happened in Virginia was they had a complete change in terms of the majority party in their legislative bodies, and they have a same-party Democrat governor. So the skids are greased. In North Carolina, at the end of the day, it's voters who make these determinations. So I would say, given the large majorities that have traditionally supported candidates from the Republican Party who are conservative, which we all five are, then we don't have a lot to be concerned about in terms of our legislature as it is currently constituted with majorities in both the House and the Senate. But that worm can turn. And so the districts that you really have to be concerned about are those that, based on redistricting, which is recently ordered by the courts that the legislature has done, and the 2020 census redistricting, will likely produce some more competitive districts throughout the state. I don't think you're going to have to worry about Iroquois County or Yadkin County, but we'll do our part to support, you know, common sense laws that limit government power. It's these other districts you've got to be concerned about. So effort in terms of monetary support or volunteers or whatever to protect your Second Amendment rights really need to be focused in those districts and those counties because that's what'll determine who's got the majority in the Senate and in the House. If we stay the course, we are basically, there's no threats out there. There's no exigent circumstances that would cause us to be concerned about our legislature currently doing anything that would constrain those unduly. We all live with some restrictions. You can't get on a plane with a weapon. You can't go into a courtroom with a weapon. We've all always lived with those kind of restrictions, and we understand why. But, you know, it's always a gray area. There's always a debate over where you draw the line, and that's why we, you know, we elect legislators to draw the line as close as possible to maximum protections under our Constitution, and then when they go over the line, we expect our court system to call them on it. So at this time, I'd like to read the resolution that has been proposed, and then open up for some comments from any commissioners, and then open up for the public hearing, and then we'll have a vote on the resolution. So this is a resolution of the Iroquois County Board of Commissioners in support of the Constitution of the United States and declaring Iroquois County as a constitutional rights protection county. Whereas the elected officials of Iroquois County are sworn to support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the state of North Carolina, and as such, the Board of Commissioners offers forth this resolution as an action to ensure the constitutional rights of the citizens of Iroquois County are protected. And whereas the commissioners recognize the Constitution of the United States as the supreme law of our nation, and whereas the Second Amendment to the Constitution of the United States states a well-regulated militia being necessary to the security of a free state, the right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed. And whereas the Supreme And whereas the Supreme Court of the United States has held that the Second Amendment protects an individual's right to possess a firearm regardless of whether that person is or is not affiliated with service in the militia, and the individual's right to use that firearm for traditionally lawful purposes, including self-defense in their home. And whereas the criminal misuse of firearms is not a reason to infringe the rights of law-abiding citizens of Iredle County. And whereas pursuant to the oaths taken, the commissioners wish to express their deep commitment to protecting all constitutional rights of the citizens of Iredle County and oppose any law, regulation, or other act that would unconstitutionally infringe on the rights of the law-abiding citizens of Iredle County. And whereas the commissioners, together with the sheriff and deputies of Iredle County, are concerned about the passage of any bill or legislation which could be interpreted as infringing the rights of the citizens of Iredle County to keep and bear arms, or which may unduly restrict their right to the same. Now therefore, be it resolved that the commissioners declare Iredle County a constitutional rights protection county, and as such, the commissioners hereby express their intent to use all power and authority at their disposal to uphold the constitutional rights of the citizens of Iredle County. And be it further resolved that the commissioners, with the full support of the sheriff of Iredle County, urge the North Carolina General Assembly and the Congress of the United States to use all power and authority to protect our citizens' freedoms and rights pursuant to the Second Amendment of the Constitution. This is the resolution that is before us this evening. And at this time, I would ask if there's any commissioners that would like to make any remarks.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Do you recognize us? Commissioner Robertson.
Being an engineer, I'm a fact-oriented person, and I've, I've assembled a few that I can show on the screen. So if you'll, if you'll indulge me for a few minutes, can we talk about the Second Amendment, gun ownership, gun rights? There's just no way for me to discuss this without using a broad brush, okay? There's exceptions to every rule, there's details that can't, we just can't mention them all. So just understand that when I, when I talk tonight, I'm speaking in somewhat broad generalizations, and in no way, shape, or form am I attempting to address every single component of this issue. I'm just trying to hit some of the high spots, okay? So I wanted to start with, why are we here tonight? And I would say that, that most of the people who've expressed interest or concern to us are basically law-abiding citizens who believe in the Second Amendment of the Constitution. And they see evidence that there is a political trend to first limit our Second Amendment rights, and then eventually terminate their Second Amendment rights. And if that happened, that would lead to the confiscation of all firearms. And I think this is the kind of thing that really makes people very, very uncomfortable is that if the, if the first action actually leads to the second action. And the Second Amendment is actually a very short, brief statement. When I think of what the Second Amendment means, and I compare it to my loan agreement that I signed with the bank to buy a house, you know, that thing was, what, six pages? And this is a couple of sentences. That's the Second Amendment. That's the sentence that we're all talking about. Now, before we get into the whys and weatherfores and stuff, I, I think it's important that you understand who the commissioners are. Because across the state, boards of county commissioners are the ones passing these resolutions. And I got to tell you, I, I, I think you need to know who we are, a little bit of our background, so that, so that there's no misperceptions at all. First, we'll start with Tommy Bowles. Tommy has been a member of the fire service for twenty years. And when he was, now I know this a little bit hard for folks to read, and if, if you're on this side of the room, it may be almost impossible. But part of the oath that all of his commissioners take is that we, we take an oath to defend the Constitution of the state as long as it's not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States. So we've all taken an oath, all five of us have taken an oath, that yes, we're citizens of the state, we're also citizens of the country, and that we defend the U.S. Constitution. Next, Commissioner Howell. Man, I'm going to tell you what, that was taken a while ago. We had fun putting this part together. Gene Howell, he's been a police officer for thirty-one years. If you want to talk to somebody that understands what happens when bad guys have guns and good guys don't, he's got thirty-one years' worth of experience and stories to share with you. He's also a member of the NRA. He's also a member of the NRA. Look at this young stuff. Marvin Norman, he was in the Army for eight years. He came out as a staff sergeant. He was a drill sergeant. Believe me, we looked for the picture of him in the brown round. He'd have gone Arlie Ermy on you if we'd had that picture. This is the oath that he took. And part of the oath that he took, when he raised his right hand as a young man, is he said that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States. That means he's willing to die. That means he was willing, he promised he raised his hand, said he was willing to die to protect the Constitution of the United States, which includes the Second Amendment. Man, that was, that was forty years and thirty pounds ago. My name's Ken Robertson. I'm a retired lieutenant colonel. Spent twenty-two years in the Army. I'm a member of the NRA, and I'm also a member of the NRA Institute for Legislative Action, which is the lobbying arm of the NRA. For Army officers, we take a slightly different oath than the enlisted, but it says that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States. I'm still a member of the retired reserve, so my oath is still valid. I didn't rescind it. And when I took it, my fingers weren't crossed. I'm going to just throw these two in for a point of personal privilege. When my son took the oath on the trophy point on the plains of West Point, he took the same oath and I administered the oath, the entire oath. No fingers crossed, no caveats that I didn't include the Second Amendment. My youngest son swore his oath, we did the same thing. The oldest son served time in Afghanistan, the youngest one in Iraq. And I saw a man with the hundred and first airborne hat on, they're screaming eagles just like you were, sir. And finally, look at this young chap. Holy cow, was that a mustache?
Yeah.
James Mallory, thirty-five years in the Army, retired major general. But he took the same oath that every officer takes. Thirty-five years. He didn't have his fingers crossed, he didn't say, yeah, but the Second Amendment. That's who your Board of Commissioners are. And I want to tell you, and I'm just going to just say one thing, and I'm going to leave it alone. I saw on social media, a couple of folks implied that this board was weak on the Second Amendment. I'll tell you right now, the man who wrote that was either misinformed, ignorant, or both. I'll leave it at that. All right, let's talk about the Second Amendment. The Second Amendment has that provision about the well-regulated militia. If the writers of the Constitution had intended for arms to only remain in the hands of what we know of today, is the reg, well-regulated militia such as the National Guard and Reserves, then immediately after the Constitution was ratified, there would have been gun confiscation in the United States. That did not happen. So can we quit talking about that for God's sake? Next, I just want to say, the Second Amendment's a tough amendment. It's a tough amendment. The American Revolution was fought by some inhabitants of the colonies, not everybody fought. But we fought against the British government, which at the time was our government, and the patriots fought against their neighbors who'd remained loyal to the Crown. Now, I'm going to tell you, the Battle of Kings Mountain was not fought between the British and the redcoats. It was between, excuse me, between the, the patriots and the redcoats. It was fought between the patriots and the loyalists. There was nobody with redcoats running up and down that mountain. It was a civil war. It was tough. Francis Marion, the Swamp Fox, almost all of his battles were patriots versus loyalists. It wasn't until the end of the war, when they were fighting closer to Charleston, that he started fighting the redcoats. The Second Amendment isn't just about fighting an existing government, because we fought our neighbors. The founding fathers wanted to protect the ability of the people to do this again if our government began taking away our rights as guaranteed in the Constitution. That is a terrible, terrible thought to even imagine that our country, for the second time in our history, that we would take up arms against each other. But that's what the Second Amendment was about. It's a horrible thought. I don't even like to think about it. Nobody likes to think about it. So whenever people engage in conversations about the Second Amendment as if it's about target shooting, or deer and duck hunting, or protecting your home against burglars, that had nothing to do, that has nothing to do with the Second Amendment, okay? Read any of our founding, what, what the founding fathers wrote, they don't mention anything about dove hunting. I mean, most people own long guns, they didn't own pistols for home protection. Heck, most people didn't have much in their homes to steal. So whenever somebody says you don't need a ten-round magazine to go deer hunting, Second Amendment has nothing to do with deer hunting. And usually, it also tells you something when somebody says that. They have no idea what the Second Amendment, what the Second Amendment is really about. Can we stop for a minute and let's just think about, how did we get to this point? How do we get to the point that everybody showed up here tonight? How did we get to the point that we all started to think about this? In recent years, we've always had people who wanted more restrictions on our Second Amendment rights. I, I don't remember a time when somebody wasn't against Second Amendment rights, okay? But usually, those people were kind of in the minority in most states, so we really didn't see any wide-range restrictions. Now, there were some liberal states, California, New Jersey, Connecticut, New York, and they did act some, what I would say are pretty severe restrictions on gun ownership. But we never dreamed it could happen here. And we didn't really think it would happen close to here. I still can't believe that, that Virginia, the home of George Washington and Robert E. Lee, oh my gosh. Holy cow, what on earth are they thinking right now? This is what happened. You know, it's what happened in Virginia, not in California, that kind of got everybody riled up. But really, I mean, how did we come to get here tonight? I mean, this, this didn't just happen. We have to ask ourselves, what changed? What changed? What, what made it so that they now have that power that they used to not have? You have to ask yourself, why are so many politicians now voting to elect, I mean, why are so many Americans? It's not like politicians woke up and took a pill and now they're against the Second Amendment. Why are so many Americans voting for these people who are advocating either limiting or eliminating the Second Amendment? Heck, I, I, when I, when we went into our session before five o'clock, the results of Iowa weren't in, but I heard that Bernie Sanders, or maybe Mayor Pete won. Who won? Do we know? Do we know? We don't know yet. E, e, either way, Bernie Sanders was close. Can you imagine that? Think about this for a minute. Think about this for a minute. Can you imagine that a admitted socialist won in Iowa? That's why we're here. Something's happened, something's changed. So what all, what changed? And I'm going to tell you, if we don't understand what changed and why it changed, the anti-gun owner, anti-gun voters are going to continue to prevail at the ballot box. So who used to be against gun rights as we know them? It was people who just thought that all guns were evil and made good people do evil things if they had access to guns. And I mean, there's people that think this, okay? They're in the minority, but, I mean, but they do, they do think this. They think a man goes to work every day, goes to church on Sundays, give him a gun, and he starts shooting people. It's crazy. But there are some people that just believe that guns are these inanimate objects that take good people and turn them into bad people. But they've always, the folks who believed that were always pretty much in the minority. Then we've got the people who thought that criminals would be law-abiding citizens if they had no guns. Got some guy who's robbing the convenience store with a gun, take away his gun, now he goes and gets a job and goes to church on Sunday because he doesn't have a gun. Does it make, it doesn't make any sense, but there's people who believe that if bad people don't have guns, they'll become good people. It, it's kind of stupid, and that's why they never had the political power, okay? Then you have people who thought that criminals who don't obey the laws, like crimes against murder and armed robbery, but if you pass gun laws, they will, they will obey those laws. So people who would normally go robbing and killing, and they don't have any problem breaking those laws, but if you pass gun laws, they'll obey those gun laws, and since they obey those gun laws, now they don't have the guns to go kill people and rob stuff. It's so asinine, it's, it's hard to believe that we even talk about it. And there were people who believed that, but they were in the minority. So what changed? Let me tell you. Any crowd, any gun crowd has been joined by citizens and a lot of voting citizens who are scared by the numerous headlines of multiple gun-related crimes and mass shootings. They either don't know the intent of the founding fathers, or they don't care. They don't care. They simply see the headlines, and they want the government to make the gun violence stop. That's all they know. They, they aren't students of history, okay? They're, they're not scholars of the Constitution. Never heard of the Bill of Rights, don't care. They just want it to stop. In their eyes, this, this whole argument of restricting guns and eliminating guns has nothing to do with the Second Amendment. They never, it just doesn't. They just want it to stop. That's the center of gravity for this fight, if we want to avoid losing our gun rights. Those people who used to be on the sidelines, they didn't care that we had guns, they didn't care that other people had guns, they just didn't care. Now, all of a sudden, they're off the sidelines, and they care. And they've come down on the side that says, let's restrict gun ownership rights. This new group of people, they're concerned, they're scared, and they vote. And we can't pretend that they don't exist. How did this come to be? What changed? I would say the big shootings at schools, just the number of people who've been shot. And, and, yeah, I did, I did flip that, yeah. Just the, I mean, just, just the headlines have been incredible. I mean, and they've been frequent. It's not like we had it once and it went away, okay? This is what's changed. Let's talk about, how did we get here? Let's talk about, how did we get here? How did this come to happen? I mean, all of a sudden, everybody didn't wake up and take a pill and start shooting people. What happened? Something happened. Let's think about that for a minute. Let's take a look at the political power just in the state of North Carolina. If you look, and I, and I, I just, for a frame of reference, just went from the year 2004. We used to be a state that was dominated by the Democrats, went through a period of split, where the legislature was Republican, the governor was Democrat, then we had all Republicans for a while, now we have a Democrat governor, Republicans in the legislative That's the history. Pay attention to this slide. These are the number of prisons that were closed since 2000. And you ought to see the list that I did not include, from 1997 to 98 and 99, just those three years, there were a tremendous number of prisons closed. And those were the prisons closed when it was just the Democrats. These are the list of prisons that we closed, it was under either split leadership or Republican leadership. There's a lot of fingerprints on this. That's a lot of prisons. That's a lot of people who use guns in crimes that normally would be in those beds, and now they're on the streets. Think about that for a minute. In the North Carolina Department of Corrections website, they are very proud of the Justice And here's what they said about it. "We've made remarkable progress since that happened." And these are their accomplishments. Not my words, their words, accomplishments. We have fewer prisoners. That's great. They have fewer prisoners. So what are they doing? They're committing the gun crimes out on the street that now people are using as an excuse to take your guns away. Probation revocations. Ah, we're not revoking probation as often, as if that's really good. I don't know, maybe, it could be, and might be. But now they're getting, now, uh, more felons are getting, uh, released early, and they're getting supervised probation, and we hired some probation officers. That's what they're bragging about. But this is from the Charlotte Observer. This is an article from the Charlotte Observer. Charlotte Observer may be many things, but conservative is not one of them. And even in, in the stories that they've been carrying that says, they started looking at it because their murder rate has gone through the ceiling, and they're going, why are so many people getting killed? What they're finding out is, all the people that they're arresting for murder, guess what? They've already committed gun crimes. Guess what? They're not in jail. Guess why? We closed all the jails. We, we closed the jails. Notice why I say "we"? Let me tell you something Democrats believe. They believe that most people aren't responsible for their actions, that society did them bad, that's why they had to rob the bank, that's why they had to shoot somebody, they were angry about something that happened 140 years ago, okay? Nobody's responsible, so they really shouldn't be in jail. And conservatives don't like to spend money. Boy, that's a marriage made in heaven. Close the jails. Bad guys don't have to go to jail, we don't have to spend the money. That's how that many jails get closed. That's how that many jails get closed. And this is the result. If you can't read what's in highlighted, he said, "At some point, we're gonna really have to work on prosecuting these people," or making a statement saying that this is unacceptable. Doesn't matter if you prosecute them, if there's no place for them to go, if you say, "Well, he committed a crime with a gun, he'll go to prison." Yes, he might, but they'll have to release somebody who also committed a crime with a gun to make room for him, because we did away with so many prison beds. Mandatory sentencing wasn't about making sure that people got the maximum sentence, it was about making sure that people got the minimum sentence, because we'd done away with our prison capacity. That's the sad fact. So when you act, ask yourself, what changed? People are scared of gun violence from criminals with guns. And their fear is real. The crime they fear is real. Now, are guns the problem? Or is it the fact that we no longer confine criminals on the scale that we once did, is that the problem? And who's responsible to fix this? I just wanna brag on us for just a minute. What's Iredale County doing? We just built a jail that cost almost thirty million dollars. And we didn't borrow money to do it. We did it by saving up for decades. Big spending commissioners. This is what you gotta do. We built a jail, it cost twenty-nine million dollars to build that jail. The annual cost to operate the new jail would be about eleven million dollars a year, almost twelve. We don't know yet, because we've not, we've not been in the new facility. And it only is gonna house initially just under three hundred inmates. Now, before you go and say, "Well, God, we need to build more jails," understand that, and I'm, I'm gonna speak to Senator Sawyer and Representative McNeil. For them just to replace three thousand prison beds, now remember, our prisoners are typically not the worst of the worst. So our, our cost to, to keep them in our jail is probably less, it, it is less than it would be for the state. But just to add three thousand prison beds would be about a hundred and twenty million dollars a year. That's a big chunk of change. That is a big chunk of change, and that doesn't include what it would cost to stand up old prison facilities or build new ones. This isn't an easy problem to fix. I told you, this is tough. Jails are not cheap to build or operate. Let's talk about mass shootings. An overwhelming percentage of the mass shootings do not occur during the conduct of a typical crime by an ordinary criminal. Nobody goes to the 7-Eleven and shoots thirty-eight people. At all these mass shooting events, at no time did the criminal come and say, "Everybody put your wallets in this bag," and then he goes and shoots thirty-six people. That doesn't happen. That hasn't happened. I think we can all agree, you don't have to be a psychiatrist or have medical training to know that if somebody goes and they shoot twenty or thirty people, they're not right. They're cuckoo for Cocoa Puffs. You don't have to be a physician to know that. I can understand how somebody gets mad and in the heat of the moment, they make a mistake and they kill somebody, or intentionally in the, in the act of self-defense, they may kill a person, maybe even two. But folks who are out killing twenty and thirty people, they're nuts. They have a serious mental illness. And you can say that, in, in, in most of the cases, not all of the cases, I remember I said I'm painted with a broad brush, that they are often committed by people with a known history of serious untreated mental illness. We're not talking about little postpartum depression, okay? We're not talking about the little stuff, we're talking about the serious mental illnesses. And you know what? The families almost always knew there was a problem, and they had exhausted every resource at their control to deal with it. The police always often knew it was a problem. They were powerless to stop them. And you go, wait a minute, how can that be? How can that be? I want you to look at this. How were they unable to do it? This is a figure that, that, that talks about the number of state hospital beds where we could put people who had serious mental illnesses, where they were either at risk for harming themselves or someone else. In 1955, nationwide, we had almost five hundred and fifty-nine thousand beds where we could put people like that. Five hundred and fifty-nine thousand beds nationwide. You know how many we have now? Thirty-seven thousand. Again, this is where liberals and conservatives could agree. Liberals, "Oh, it's horrible. Somebody has mental illness, and you're going to confine them and put them in a place, and it's a hospital, and it's horrible, and it's not their fault, so they should be let free." Conservatives, "Wow, it costs a whole lot of money to keep mentally ill people in these hospitals, we could save a lot of money, so they could all agree, do away with the beds." Guess what? They did away with the beds. Guess what? Now we're living with the consequences. Now we're living with the consequences. This is what has changed. A bunch of people didn't wake up, and all of a sudden, they hated the fact that their neighbor owns a pistol. This is what has changed. We eliminated ninety-seven percent of the places where we can treat people with serious mental health issues. I've heard Sheriff Campbell tell me, I cannot tell you how many times, when they've gotten somebody in their custody, and it's clear that this is a serious mental ill issue, it's become a law enforcement issue, but it's a serious mental health issue, and they have to, they sometimes spend days searching any place in the state that can take one person, and then we have to send deputies to drive that person halfway across the state, just to put them in a hospital bed. Oops, quick on the, North Carolina has been one of the worst. Now, you go, "Well, why don't you show us the North Carolina figures?" Ms. Jones, did I ask you for the North Carolina figures?
Yes, you did.
And what did you do?
I made a request to, uh, to partners, that is, one of our partner with mental health, and they made a request, a request to the state, and we were not able to get those numbers. There were a lot of questions regarding why we wanted those numbers.
They wouldn't even tell us. They were so stinking embarrassed, they would not tell us. They would not tell us. So at the end of the day, people are gonna reach out and say, "Help." And they reach to a politician, "Help." Okay? Please, do something. The Austrian philosopher Ludwig von Mises said, "It takes three things to happen for people to change." Number one, there must be a dissatisfaction with the current state of affairs. Number two, there must be a vision of a better state. And number three, there must be the belief that that better state can be achieved. People are genuinely scared and concerned. They wanted answers. They want solutions, and they look to politicians for the solutions. And let me tell ya, the Democrats were quick with a solution. And it's always, they, they, they got a one-string banjo, and they play the same song. But I'm gonna ask you something here. What was the Republican solution? What was it? After all the mass shootings, what was the, what was the Republican solution? If we don't offer them a solution, the only solution on the table is take away your guns. So I'm gonna ask you tonight, I want you to think about what will be the Republican solution. Is it just gonna be to hope that we win in a courtroom? I'll tell you right now, resolutions aren't solutions, they're symbolic gestures. We cannot instruct Sheriff Campbell to enforce any law. We cannot instruct Sheriff Campbell to ignore any law. Our resolution is just, it's just a piece of paper. Democrats are promising action. We're promising resolutions. And for every complex problem, H.L. Minkin said, "There's an answer that is clear, simple, and wrong." Passing a resolution is simple. It's also wrong. This doesn't change a thing. This doesn't change a thing, other than a statement of solidarity, and maybe letting, letting some folks know that we're concerned. But this resolution will not change any of those people's minds, because they're scared and they're concerned. It won't change that at all, and they're winning. Or at least, they're winning in Georgia. Now, so are we here to really fix the problem? Because if we don't address the root cause, they're gonna continue to ask for solutions, simple solutions. And the simplest solution for the liberals is to blame law-abiding gun owners. It's just that easy. That's the only solution on the table right now, so people take it. You go to a restaurant, and on the menu is hamburgers or nothing, what are you gonna order? The simple solution that the others hope will work is to take guns away from law-abiding citizens. It's some shape, if they say it's against the law for you to have a weapon that can hold thir, more than ten rounds, if you've got most, if you've got a semi-automatic handgun, it's illegal now. It's illegal. There are three hundred and ninety-three million guns in the United States. If you make it illegal for us to own most of those guns, you've just turned a lot of law-abiding people overnight to criminals. Play the tape forward. Who's not allowed to vote? Convicted, felons. And if they make it a felony, ah, ooh. You see, see how we can connect the dots? But they believe that if there's fewer guns out there, if we confiscate some guns, there'll be fewer guns that the criminals can get their hands on, and the mentally ill can get their hands on, and if there's fewer of those, there should be fewer horrific gun crimes. Once again, everybody's guilty of this, for every complex problem, there's an answer that's clear and simple and wrong. Uh-oh. Sorry. Pew Research. Now, if somebody does the math here, you may see there's a little math problem, but I, I get it off of their website. They said, right, and, and if you look at different websites, taken at different times, you get different figures, but about, generally speaking, about thirty percent, thirty percent, they say own a gun, but they say fifty-seven percent don't own a gun. That's a thirteen percent, didn't answer the question, I guess. So you can say that maybe thirty to forty percent of the people own a gun, but fifty, seventy percent don't own a gun, and sixty percent of the citizens polled, this is nationwide, this isn't Iredale County, believe that there ought to be some additional stricter gun rules. This is what's changed. That number didn't, used to be sixty percent. It used to be less than fifty percent. Now it's sixty percent. Think that's a coincidence? Does somebody who doesn't own a gun, for whatever reason, do you think that they're really overly concerned about your right to own a gun? They just, they just don't have a dog in the fight, okay? They're not gonna be sympathetic to our argument that it's about the Second Amendment. They don't care. They just want the mass shootings to start. Now, I'm gonna tell ya, gun owners are a minority, and we can't let anybody divide us. Now, the libs are gonna try to divide us, but I'm gonna tell ya, I see conservatives trying to divide us as well. We gotta cut that crap out. If we don't stand together, we're gonna lose, I guarantee ya. But we have an uphill problem at the ballot box, but unless we offer a solution that makes sense to non-gun owners, unless we have a solution that makes sense to non-gun solution that makes sense to non-gun owners, we will lose at the ballot box. So we'll stand for our rights. We will. Do you know what? Conservative politicians are gonna have to do the hard work to correct the lack of prison capacity and inpatient mental health care. Because until we address the root cause, we can either blame the gun that somebody fought, killed people with, or the person who pulled the trigger. One of them is gonna be held responsible. Right now, I would say, we wanna hold the people responsible, the other side wants to hold that piece of metal that I've never seen pull its own trigger. No, that's not true. I saw a 50-cal cook off with a belt, and it was really hot. I've seen a machine gun go off on its own, but somebody pulled the trigger initially. We gotta start offering a solution. And a resolution isn't the only solution. We've gotta fix where our country and our state is broken. And I'm gonna make an appeal to you tonight. Get active. This isn't where this battle is gonna be fought and won or lost. I'm a member of the NRA. Don't just join the, the NRA's legislative action, the Institute of Legislative Action, that's the lobbying arm. They will put money into the races that we can win in other places where our rights can be challenged. Okay? Donate money. Money is the mother's milk of politics. All I, I'm just, and I'm gonna, I'm concluding, I'm just telling you right now, this resolution is nice, it doesn't fix the problem. We gotta be willing to support our elected officials when they say, "If I'm gonna build jails, if we're gonna go and fix the mental health system that we broke, it's gonna cost some money." You can't go calling them a big government liberal when they say, "We're gonna have to spend some money to fix the problem." You will pay for this problem with money to fix the root cause, or you will pay for it with the ownership of your weapons. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Any other commissioners have anything to add? Okay. At this time, I'm going to open the public hearing. And first on the list to be heard, and we do have five-minute limitations, is Sheriff Darren Campbell.
Five or three?
Three.
Five.
Okay. You're right. I'll come up here.
Thank you, Board. I promise you, I won't need the whole five minutes. I'll be very brief. Uh, to get a chance to speak about this issue we've got before us tonight. I spent the last several weeks working on a proclamation to reaffirm my commitment to the United States Constitution and to the citizens of Iredale County. I cannot stress enough the importance of us together taking a stance in firmly stating to the citizens of Iredale County, "I resolve to protect the Second Amendment constitutional right of the people to keep and bear their arms." This stance is consistent with the framers of the Constitution, as they made their intent clear. The right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed. Little bit about the history and the office of the sheriff, from what I'm hearing, 1776, the North Carolina Constitution established the office of sheriff. It wasn't until 1791 that the Second Amendment to the United States Constitution was ratified as part of the Bill of Rights. My duties were established 15 years before the individual right to keep and bear arms was ratified. Thus, as the elected sheriff and law enforcement arm of Iredale County, it is my duty to stand before the commissioners today and ask that you adopt a resolution which will serve as an objection to any infringement on our right to bear arms. This is a historic day, as we take a stance to ensure the integrity of the Second Amendment remains intact, as the framers intended centuries ago. Attacks are being made on our Constitution, and I'm here to let everyone know that this is a battle that I will not back away from. Recent United States Supreme Court cases illustrate that the Second Amendment is still under attack. Legal arguments are frequently made to infringe upon the right to bear arms. If our legislators were to enact legislation similar to the neighboring Virginia, taxpayers will have to spend millions of dollars fighting a battle what is already constitutional. This resolution sends a clear message to our governor and to the North Carolina General Assembly to think twice before considering any laws infringing on the rights of law-abiding citizens. In the ending, I wanna send you with a powerful message from Legal Common Book by Thomas Jefferson. Laws that forbid the carrying of arms disarm only those who are neither inclined nor determined to commit crimes. Such laws make things worse for the assaulted and better for the assailants. They serve rather to encourage than to prevent homicides. For an unarmed man may be attacked with greater confidence than an armed man. Simply put, the only people who abide by restrictive gun laws and legislation are our law-abiding citizens. Gentlemen, I appreciate, appreciate each and every one of your resolve, your commitment, your dedication to all the citizens of Iredale County. And to you, the citizens that showed up tonight, I appreciate you taking the time to come out here. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have of me.
Any questions for Sheriff Campbell?
I just wanna say thank you to you and your staff for all the work that went into helping us work with the resolution on behalf of the citizens. We appreciate all the cooperation.
I absolutely appreciate y'all's hard work also.
Sheriff Campbell, I'll say this. I think the fact that we are unified from a policy perspective and from a law enforcement perspective may be unique in North Carolina. I haven't seen any other constitutional protection county resolutions that incorporated both the sheriff and the county commission. I think that sends a message that we're unified across the board, and we're unified with other counties, because that sends a message. And as Commissioner Robertson has, has so eloquently described, you know, you deal with the issues of having folks that were formerly housed in the Department of Corrections as felons now housed in our county jail. That's one reason we've had to expand. Used to be, if you got a six-month sentence or less, you went to the county jail. It was, it was just temporary waystation. It was just to get somebody's attention, that, you know, this is not a pleasant place to be, and they probably oughta straighten up. Well, Department of Corrections has shut so many beds that now felons and any misdemeanor up to two years is confined in the county jail. We're not equipped to do corrections. Okay? It's a housing situation. And at the end of the day, almost 70% of the inmates that are in our correctional, local correctional facilities have either mental illness or an addiction issue. And they then become wards of the Iredale County taxpayer to pay their medical bills.
No deductible.
Yeah. So this is a, this is a situation where these chickens come home to roost. And we thank Sheriff Campbell and his correctional staff at the jail. As you know, we're gonna be opening that jail. Do we have a final inspection?
Next slide.
Inspectors always have to find something.
Next slide. No. Everything's, everything is on track. Few hiccups with more of the architects. I think Beth can sort of fill you on that, but I think it, soon, soon.
Well, we wanna be able to have a joint open house so that people can, before it's occupied, people can see where their tax dollars have gone. And the jail has been designed to be safe for our correctional officers with limited two persons per cell, much more positive control. It also has been equipped with the 21st century capabilities of being able to remotely appear in court by video teleconference. Anytime you cut back on the, the need of moving prisoners from cell block to a courtroom, you cut down on the opportunities for harm to our officers and harm to our court personnel and any citizens in attendance. So it's up to the court system to leverage that technology to the maximum so that we can squeeze out every efficiency we can. So thank you very much, Sheriff Campbell.
Hey, absolutely. I appreciate all y'all's support and working on this. And one thing I can say, you're talking about the technology and the jail, one thing you won't find, and we've all spoke about this, is weight room, rec room, or TV. It's gonna be jail. So thank y'all very much.
Second on the list is former county commissioner, current representative Jeff McNeely.
Good evening, Chairman and fellow commissioners. Good to see you, staff, ladies and gentlemen, and the audience. I'm glad to get to come talk to you tonight. I, I think the word, when I see what's going on in our neighboring state, is tyranny. That's what comes to mind. Cruel, unreasonable, or arbitrary use of power or control. And that's what's happened. We've allowed tyranny to rule. And our founding fathers, that's why they fought for this country, was because of tyranny. Because somebody put oppressive means on our rights and our privileges. I know each and every one of you up there, sitting up there, I've worked with you. You're good people. I know your heart, I know how you feel. I'm not worried about y'all. But there's people out there that wanna take your rights. They're gonna take your rights. I suggest you wake up. Senator Sawyer's here with me tonight. We both serve in your legislature in Raleigh. We've seen it firsthand. This past summer, I was appointed in July, and not too long after that, there was a shooting in Texas. And all of a sudden, there was a flurry of gun bills filed in the judicial committee. I served on the judicial committee in the North Carolina House of Representatives. That gave me a firsthand look. I'd like to tell you right now, I wanna thank Representative Ted Davis from down in Wilmington, who's our senior chair, because Ted looked at those bills that were filed, and believe me, they were not favorable to you if you believe in the Second Amendment. And he shut that committee down. Ironically, I had a bill in judicial that had to do with my dairy farmers, your neighbors. Ted Davis told me what was going on, showed me the bills. I really wanted to see my bill move forward, but after seeing the bills and the controversy that they had bring, and the possibility that they could possibly get passed, I told him, "I'm fine. My farmers will wait. As bad as they're hurting, they'll wait." So don't think even the concept of bills being filed isn't a detriment to you. It is. It took some rights away from you and some liberties right there. It hurts your neighbors. Some of y'all may know some people that dairy farm. They're struggling. I took an oath, not only as a county commissioner, but as a House of Representative. Senator Sawyer, she took an oath also. We both took an oath to uphold the Constitution, not only in the state of North Carolina, but also the United States of America. I know both of us feel strongly about the oath we took. It was not taken lightly. We will fight to make sure that you keep your freedoms. But we are two, and there's 120 in the House and 50 in the Senate. We need people. I kinda laughed. People told me, "What's the difference between being a county commissioner and Representative Jeff McNeely?" And I said, "Well, it used to. I just had to find two suckers to believe like I did, and I could get something going in 30 days on the county commission, we could maybe fix something." Now I gotta get 60 to participate with me. Though the task is more difficult, but don't fear, we're up to it. We talk about Virginia, and we talk about the Second Amendment. And I know a lot of people wish that there was more maybe spoken about the Second Amendment in this resolution. But right now, as we talk about this, there's a bill that's been filed that says you cannot talk bad about your governor or any other elected official. So they're coming after your First Amendment, too. And they'll get them all if they have their way. They wanna silence. They wanna silence us, and we will not be silenced. At this time, if you would, stand with me, because I'm gonna pray, which is another freedom that has been taken away from us, that we can no longer do at a county commissioners' meeting, is our right to pray at that diocese. The last time I was with you, I prayed, and I'm gonna do it again. If you're not able to stand, that's fine, but if you are, please stand with me. If you would, give me a moment. Dear Heavenly Father, dear Lord, I put our merciful self at your feet. We have fought so hard. So many have gave so much for this country. They fought to keep the freedoms that you have ordained us with through our Constitution, Lord. And I feel like you have made us the greatest nation to ever exist on this earth. And I still believe we're a Christian nation, no matter what anybody tells us. And Lord, we will have fights, and we will carry forth, and we will win, and we will keep our Constitution intact, and you will bless us, Lord, because we will show, we will bow to you, and we pray for your mercy, and we will show you, dear Lord, our respect for you. I pray all this in your holy, precious Son, Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Danny Booby, and if you could, please.
I'm not concurred, but you said that.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Booby. Richard Renninger, and if you could also just state your, name and address for the record.
Richard Renninger from Harmony, North Carolina. Thank you, commissioners. Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you, citizens, for showing up here tonight, viewing what's going on with your government, hearing what's being said, and being a part of your government. These folks are just a part of the ones that paid for that jail, paid for the sheriff's department, and paid for the other things. But thank you for showing up. The charge was led by Ken Robertson. I'll tell you what's changed. When I went to North Iredale High School, the guns were in the racks.
In the pickups.
The guns were loaded. What's changed? Took God out of school. Now we talk about abortion up to nine months. You took the family out of the schools. I don't know, we let it happen. We, we let it happen. But that's what's changed. I do not know of anyone being shot or harmed with a firearm while I was at school, and the parking lot was full. The windows were rolled down. What's changed? It'll be interesting to see how the newspapers and the media reports this in tomorrow's edition. It'll be interesting. But Ken Robertson needs to be at every school in this county and do that presentation to those that'll attend. Thank you, commissioners. Thank you for all you do, your leadership, your wisdom, and your, your devotion to this county. Thank you, legislators, and thank you, Sheriff. We all stand with you. Again, thank you, people, for showing up here tonight. This is your government, and if you allow it to move forward as it is, they're, they'll work on all those amendments, for that stand you've took is very, very important, the whole thing. Because again, the second one defends the first one. But again, the problem being, back to the mental health situation, it's a lack of education. Ken Robertson, I challenge you to did this in every school in Iredale County, especially the high schools, the junior highs, because these kids- these kids don't get this. They have no understanding. We're not being helped a lot of times with the policies, not being able to pray, not being able to talk about other things. But when you let the family and God out of the situation, here's your results. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Mark Cash.
Mark Cash, 232 Low Ray Lane, Statesville, North Carolina. Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners. Thanks for the opportunity to get to be here and to say a few words. It's really great to see such a crowd. I'm sure that y'all are pretty appreciative of that. You've looked out over so many empty seats so many times, that it's good to see that there's a lot of people here that this stirred up their interest. And there's good reason in it. There really is good reason. And to follow up on Mr. Renninger's comments, Commissioner Robertson, you were talking about a lot of things that have gone wrong about mental health and issues. But one of the things that's gone wrong is what you were saying has not been taught. That is not in our schools. That needs to be put forth to all of our students. People have lost that direction. We don't see it. I mean, I'm old enough that I, in school, there was guns everywhere, and we didn't have to worry about it. But getting back to where I really was, is I would have liked to seen this in the title, mention the Second Amendment, because so many counties have included that in their resolution. I know we've got it into wording, but I would like to see it in the title. One of the reasons is some things that Chairman Mallory mentioned. Chairman Mallory mentioned that Iredale County is a strong conservative county, and we don't have to worry about it right here. Things are pretty solid, and those things that we worry about in Virginia are probably not gonna happen in Iredale County. But that's all the more reason we need to stand up and be bold. We need to stand up and say that this is a Second Amendment resolution, because we are that conservative county. We need to have the backbone to say it. I really feel that should be of a concern to us tonight. Another thing that's in...
I'm pretty sure I dealt with the backbone issue. I'm pretty sure that I dealt with the backbone issue.
Well, I think...
You've got three soldiers up here that spent 60 years that promised to put our life on the line. So you can say, it's okay for you to say you wish that we had included the word. But you're not gonna insult me and say, "I don't have a backbone."
Well, listen, the...
Are we clear on that?
The, uh...
Are we clear on that?
The first principles of due process...
I said, "We cannot defy, we cannot be divided."
Are you gonna take up my five minutes?
No.
Okay. Okay. As you have taken up a lot of it.
You'll get credit.
First principles of due process says county sheriff and US marshal are not in office to serve as government service. They're to serve the people, guarding against government abuse. And those things are important. But there's some wording that's in your resolution that really concerns me, and it's because it's highlighted in your, whereas Supreme, the Supreme Court of the United States has held that the Second Amendment protects an individual's right to possess a firearm, regardless of whether that person is or not, is not affiliated in the service of the militia, and of individuals' right to use that firearm for traditional lawful purposes, including as self-defense in their home. North Carolina is a stand-your-ground state. It is not a castle doctrine state. I think you should really consider changing the wording of that, because it highlights in your home, in North Carolina, we are a stand-your-ground state, and I think that would be important to address that. I thank you for your time. Thank everyone for their time. And I've said what I need to say.
Thank you, Mr. Cash.
I don't have much to say, but I do have something to say. My name is Tom Cox. I live at 136 Red Barn Lane in Statesville. I've been there since 1970. I've raised my family here, created a business here, and it buried my wife here. We need our guns. Why do we need our guns? Because law enforcement has our guns. And we, the people, face the threat that law enforcement face. We need the same weaponry that they have. A lot of people that don't understand guns don't understand that. When law enforcement were carrying a .38 revolver, the gun of the people was a .38 revolver. When they went to Glocks, the gun of the people was a Glock. When they went to AR-15s, the gun of the people is an AR-15. Why? Because law enforcement determines the level of threat and selects a weapon that they can defeat that. We, the people, experience the threat before law enforcement ever get a call. And in two minutes, a Looney Tune can do a lot of damage if it takes law enforcement two minutes to get there. So that's one reason we need our guns. The second reason is to form a militia if our government ever can become so overpowering that as a country, we say, "That's enough." And that's why we are weaponized. All of us don't ever want that to happen. But in my 82 years, I've seen it on that road, and as we all have experienced, it is happening. That's the second reason. That's all I have to say, except I went to the library the other day, first time in years I've been to the library. As I drove up, I saw an outline on the front of the building of a handgun. So I parked, took my concealed carry off, locked it in the glove compartment in my car, and walked to the building. When I got to the building, I saw this is a legal concealed carry premise by law.
Absolutely.
And I thought, wow, what a wonderful deterrent for a looney bird that wants to create mischief. When he sees that, he's gonna say, "I don't think I want to do it in here, because somebody's gonna stop me." Or they could. And I think, this is my personal opinion, that our school system, the size of the schools, there's at least 10 people in that school that has the judgment, and can be trained with weaponry, and have approved concealed carry in every school in the county. A resource officer is only one person, and he's probably in the cafeteria having a cup of coffee, or... He can only be one place at a time. And when a Looney Tune comes in, he's the only line of defense. With concealed carry, the perpetrator never knows who has a weapon. And when I walked into the library, I felt secure, knowing that somebody else could have a weapon in there, even though mine was in the car. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Kenneth Davis.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Kenneth Davis. I'm from Statesville, North Carolina. I'm originally from the mountains of West Virginia. I'm an ex-police officer. And Mr. Roberts, I took that same oath, and proud to say that I did. That flag that hangs over our means more to me than just a piece of cloth. I took another oath. I'm also a minister. But besides that, I took another oath that I cherish even more. And that oath is to protect my family. I took the oath to protect this country from foreign and domestic. Right now, the fight that we're fixing to have, and we're gonna have a fight, and I commend everything you said, and I commend all of y'all for y'all's stance. The fight that we're fixing to fight is not coming from foreign. It's coming from the domestic. Our fight, the next step, as Sheriff Campbell was talking, and I also commend him highly, our next step is in Raleigh. But the fight ain't gonna stop there. The fight's going from there onto Washington, DC. So each and all the counties that's coming together is a step. Resolution is a step, because that is initiating our voice, which is the main step. We have got to let Raleigh know, along as it goes on to DC, the voice of the people is not to be silenced. That is our right, because the people that's in Raleigh and DC, just along, same as y'all, they work for the people.
Absolutely.
The people put them in their offices that they're in. I don't care if it's Democrat or Republican, even though I know the far left on the other side of the aisle is the one that's bringing all this trouble on. And as the man said earlier, I grew up also when guns was in the back of my pickup. But I also remember taking that oath of allegiance of the morning in school, and saying that prayer in school. When prayer was took out of the schools, and the right for a parent to correct their child, that's when the problem really started, with all the nuts that's out there. And it is nuts, a mental problem. But I stand with y'all. I stand with the people. I stand with Sheriff Campbell. But I want each and every one to know, when we put God first, that's the first and the best step that we can go.
Amen.
Amen. I thank you for your time.
Good evening. Thank you, members of the county commission. Thank you, Sheriff Campbell. Members, citizens of Iredale County, this is my first time speaking. With that being said, let me go get right to it. Our forefathers wrote the Constitution for a reason, and that was given to us for protection of our homes, our families, foreign and domestic. And that's our right to keep it bare arms. What took place in the Commonwealth of Virginia cannot and will not take place here in the great seal of the great state of North Carolina. We, the people here in Iredale County, just want to be left alone, pursuing life, liberty, and happiness, raise our families, and protect ourselves lawfully. I wanted to also say thank you for the opportunity to allow me to speak, because there's, a lot of stuff is going on, you know, with our government, and want to take away, constantly take away our right to keep it bare arms. I feel as a citizen of this great state of North Carolina, as a citizen of the United States, is eagerly pissed off at our government, as well as our governor. We need to send a message to the General Assembly. We need to send a message to Roy Cooper, Josh Sines, our Attorney General, that we will not surrender our rights to keep it bare arms, because the assembly states that the well-regulated militia, being necessary to the security of a free state, the right of the people to keep it bare arms shall not be infringed. And one last thing, and that's how I'll close, less than five minutes. A lot of people have constantly talked about the issues of our business. One issue that I haven't heard anybody talk about, which is human trafficking. Unfortunately, our state is one of the top 10 states in the United States with human trafficking. It has a father of three girls. And any other men and women out here who have daughters, if they have not already, are already concerned about what's going on in the human trafficking business. We need, I'm grateful that you guys are stepping up and doing this resolution to protect our citizens, protect all of us, as we make sure that we have our rights to be sure to keep it bare arms, to protect. Thank you for your time to give me time to speak out. Thank you for all of your services, to each and every one of you, as well as members of the Sheriff's Office here in Iredale County, as well as the citizens here in Iredale County. Thank you, and God bless you.
For a first-time public speaker, you did mighty fine. Thank you, Mr. Magnum. Dustin Sweet.
Good evening, everybody. Ken Robertson, great slideshow. Agree with everything. I wasn't prepared to speak tonight, but there's one thing that I do want to touch on when you talk about mental health. And the hospitals closing down around 1955, that was also around the advent of psychotropic drugs. And just to throw some numbers out there, roughly 80 million people in the US are on psychiatric drugs, psychotropic drugs. 7.2 million adolescents from 0 to 17 years of age are on psychotropic drugs. Also, the vast majority of these mass shooters are on psychotropic drugs, as you all may know. Anyway, just something to think about. Support what you guys are doing. It is a first step in a long road, in a fight for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. T.J. Johnson.
T.J. Johnson, Executive Director of the North Carolina Federation of Republican Men, Statesville, North Carolina. Commissioners, I want to thank you guys tonight. I also want to thank Commissioner Robertson, Commissioner Norman, and Chairman Mallory. Thank you for your service to the United States of America. We are greatly indebted. Ladies and gentlemen, my plea tonight is not to the Board of Commissioners, but it's to you as a body. There is a war going on in America, and it's not just for our guns, it's for our morals, it's for our rights, it's for the way we live our lives. I traveled through all 100 counties of North Carolina, and I'm gonna tell you right now, you are damn lucky to have Darren Campbell as the sheriff of Iredale County. I've seen what it looks like in Buncombe County when they don't cooperate with ICE. I've seen what it looks like in Mecklenburg County when we don't cooperate with ICE. Folks, the problem, we've lost our morals. Our moral compass is deteriorated to nothing. The second problem is complacency. Every one of you sitting in here tonight has become complacent. We've become complacent, thinking they won't come for our guns. We have too many. You see them doing it in Virginia. The irony of what's going on in Virginia falls around one phrase, "Semper tyrannus." Most people equate that to John Wilkes Booth when he jumped from the balcony of Ford's Theater after he assassinated President Lincoln. But on the state seal of Virginia, you see semper tyrannus, and a slain tyrant by one of the people that he had imposed his will upon. of the people that he had imposed his will upon. Folks, education has failed us. You have teenagers walking around wearing Che Guevara T-shirts, hollering for equality. What they don't realize is that man would have shot them dead right there, just for fun, just because they were there. The NCAE, they pushed their agenda. They even adopted the raised communist fist of Che Guevara for their last protest. Folks, do we stop the indoctrination? We must teach our children why America is great. The reason we have never been invaded on our soil by a foreign country is the number of guns. Admiral Yamamoto said in World War II, the only reason we will not invade the United States is because behind every blade of grass, there's a gun. Folks, if that changes, who do you think's going to storm into our country? Folks, the complacency is over. It's our job, it's our fault. We've let this go. It's time we educate, we take action, we get involved, not only in our county, in the other 100 counties. You have people wanting to take away the Electoral College. Do you want to be run by San Francisco, Los Angeles, New York, and Chicago, places of those urban nature? No. Funny fact is, all those places, they are the most strict in gun control, but if you take them out of the statistical facts, the United States immediately falls to the bottom of the list of gun violence in the world. Ladies and gentlemen, I implore you tonight, make your voices heard, appeal to your legislator, talk to your politicians, find out what you can do, donate. If you don't have money to donate, donate time. Get out, talk, inform, educate. That is the only way to win this battle. If it comes to armed insurrection, I think we all know the result. The hunters of the United States of America comprise the largest standing army in the world. If guns were a problem, we would have already known it. Morality is the problem. Sheriff Campbell, on behalf of the North Carolina Federation of Republican Men, we stand firmly behind you 100% and will assist you in any way you need. Ladies and gentlemen, please join all of us. It's going to take us all. Thank you. God bless you, and God bless the United States of America.
Christian Reeves.
Hello, my name is Christian Reeves of 144 Freeze Farm Drive, Statesville, North Carolina. And I am here to address you and the general public today in just helping appropriate some myths that are spread by the other side of the aisle and how you can come against them. Two main arguments for gun control in America is that it worked in Australia. Well, in 95 through 96, the gun buyback program was instituted in Australia where 36% drop in gun deaths happened. And in 2001 and 2002, the Handgun Trafficking Act took place, and the homicide rate went down by 17%. In 2001 through 2014, there was a 44% decrease in homicide. That also includes firearms and non-firearms alike. At the same time, the US through 94 through 2015 decreased with the same homicide rate at approximately 44% to 43% from 94 to 2015. During the gun confiscation in Australia, there was only approximately a third of the guns actually turned in, so two-thirds of those guns still remain in circulation today within the country of Australia. At the same amount of time, America has increased with guns in circulation from 250 million to 400 million guns approximately, though, as you can see, the rates have gone down. According to the Australian Bureau of Statistics, 2% of the Australian population has come in contact with police or been arrested, or been, sorry, not been, come in contact with, but been charged or been arrested by the police force in Australia, which speaks to them not having as big of a mental health problem as Commissioner Robertson had previously stated that we do have here in the US, with approximately 30.755% of the population coming in contact with police and getting charged and/or arrested within the United States, and that information is brought by the FBI. Another reason that they use is, well, the people who wrote the Declaration of Independence, they couldn't have predicted that these guns would be here today. And to think that these men were so stupid that they wouldn't see the advancement in guns getting to the point where they are today is illogical, even though they had these guns back in that day. They had the Belton Flintlock, which was patented in the Revolutionary War and can fire up 20 rounds in five seconds in one trigger pull. The Jaredony Air Rifle had a 22-capacity magazine and could fire in 30 seconds. That rifle was also leased by Thomas Jefferson when he was equipping the Lewis and Clark Expedition heading out into the West. So they knew these guns were present, and they used them actively. They actually wanted to equip more of the Army at the time, but due to purchase, purchasing price, it was unaffordable. You also had the Piccadilly Gun, which was an early version of the Gatling Gun, which was made 60 years before the Revolutionary War. And then even hundreds of years before the Revolutionary War, you had the Pepperlock Revolvers, which could hold 20 rounds and, I'm sorry, 20 rounds, and they could all be shot at once. I'd like to talk more about just, you already touched on the importance of the mental health problems, I'm not going to dive too deep into that. But after touring the jail multiple times with my college at Mitchell Community College, we are in dire need of that new jail facility, and I'm so happy that it is coming to Iredell County. And I, as a student, would feel safer knowing that we have this sanctuary here established to, that way we have more guns around and have that initial deterrent against anybody who thinks they should come on campus with a firearm. Another point I would like to make is, at the church that I serve at, is we have a great resource officer who comes there and handles us for Wednesday night. And we have approximately 250 students to 200 students every Wednesday night, and another 20 volunteers. And he is our only line of defense in case somebody comes in. He's not currently. But if laws continue to go, they will pass, he will be our only line of defense. When on weekends, we can have up to 1,900 people attend the church in one service, we have usually three to four officers there. Granted, that is a significant amount to calculate for the population of the church, but it is still better to have those deterrents in place. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Chairman Mallory, if I could say, he shared some data with us, and some of it was a little bit different from some of the numbers I put up. When you do the research, the research has a lot of information, and it all is a little bit different, okay? But he came with facts, and that's great. I just want to tell everybody, if you go home tonight and look up some of the figures that this gentleman shared, or that I shared, if you look on 10 different websites, you'll get 10 different numbers, okay? So just be aware, and so there's going to be some differences, but I like the fact that you came with some data. That was very good. There is no Ian Clavon.
Thank you very much, again, Mr. Reeves. Rob Young.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am Rob Young. I am a resident of Statesville at 118 Quail Springs Road. I am a lifelong gun owner. I am here to support the resolution that's being made, to make Iredell County a constitutional rights protection county. I believe the point's been well made, that this isn't the entire solution. It's a small part of it. But every journey begins with that first step, and I think this is the first step toward a greater solution. I think this resolution validates a fundamental proposition, that the Supreme Court, in the landmark case of District of Columbia versus Heller, established that the right to bear arms is an individual right, not a militia, but an individual right, and that that right should not be infringed. For those who are out there who are, the question was asked, and an important question, how did we get here? One of the answers, many of the answers were provided, but one of the answers was in 2008, when the Supreme Court took on the District of Columbia's gun restrictions. What are we talking about? The District of Columbia, that district that had such wisdom that they elected Merrick Barry after he'd been convicted of drug trafficking?
Yes, they did.
That wisdom that put such restrictions on guns, that you owned a firearm, and we're talking about rifles, if you wanted to have it in your home, if you didn't have a gun lock, you had to have it disassembled, completely disassembled. How are you going to utilize that in an emergency? You aren't. Somebody challenged it. And in 2008, the Supreme Court asked the question, why these restrictions? Well, the District of Columbia said, well, because this isn't an individual right. This is a right that belongs to the militia. There's no individual right. Well, fortunately, in 2008, the answer was cast. The Supreme Court decided this is an individual right, and Washington DC, you don't have the right to impose these restrictions on your people. A triumph for the Constitution, but a challenge for the other side. Because since 2008, every opponent of gun ownership has been working without sleep, seemingly, to figure out a way to get those restrictions back on the books in the municipalities, in the counties, in the states. And you're seeing it now in Virginia. The work that they've been doing has been since 2008. So how did we get here? Heller is the reason. Iredell County joins an increasing list of counties that recognize that the Second Amendment is the key to protecting all of the other rights in our Constitution. That's a point that's been made by the Commissioners, an essential point. It's not an accident that the British, when they landed in Lexington and Concord, didn't go wrecking printing presses. They were after the guns. I would urge this Commission to pass the resolution as the very first step. As has been made abundantly clear, there are other steps that need to be taken. Mental health is an important next step. And with that, and Commissioner Bull's knows, drug addiction in this county is a rampant problem. They are hand in hand. We're not addressing these issues in a way that's effective. Just an example, in the work I do, I'm an attorney. I've been an attorney for 24 years. We encounter mentally ill people all the time. Do you know how long it takes if they're involuntarily committed for their out back on the street? Three days.
Seven to eight hours.
Three days, and that's a generous measure. We can do better, we should do better. Let this be the first step. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Young. And finally, Todd Scott.
My name is Todd Scott, Statesville NAACP President, 116 Natterwest Drive, Statesville, North Carolina. I've never seen so much partisan here tonight, coming from the Commissioners. I'm for guns. I'm a combat veteran many times. I've toyed at West Point. I've trained other militaries, so I know all about guns, firing other people's guns, putting them together, breaking them down, training soldiers. I know all about that. But when we start putting partisan politics into things, even like these slides, we stay divided. And I'm all for guns, but I don't think that we needed to do this when we already have the Second Amendment. Every time we do this, somebody, I guarantee you, went and bought a gun because they thought somebody was going to take their gun. Somebody probably in here went and bought a gun. It happens all the time when this comes out. Scare people into buying more guns. Nobody is coming to take your guns. North Carolina, the Democrats had the House and the Senate for 100 years and didn't take your guns. They could have took them if they wanted to, but nobody's going to take your guns. Who's going to come to your house and take your guns? All the police have a gun. The military, all the soldiers, most of them have a gun. Who is going to come and take the guns? That's what I want to know. And this has been going on for year after year after year to scare y'all to thinking somebody's going to take your gun when they're not. I know nobody's going to come to take my gun. So, also, and you can vote if you're a felon in North Carolina since 2008. If you're not on parole and you've done your time, you can vote in the state of North Carolina Not all the people that kill people was crazy. Not all of them was crazy. So we cannot say that all of them was crazy. And the real problem is, parents don't beat their kids no more. That's one of the problems. So we have to come up with better ideas into doing this. And Iredell County is already a Constitution, it's already, all the counties, all the states is already under the Constitution. They're already under the Constitution. Nobody's going to change that. We're already under the Constitution. And I will agree to disagree with you. And when I leave here today, I'm not mad, but I got to voice my opinion, just like y'all did. So, and we're going to move on from here. Whatever goes on, y'all have done it, however they vote, I'm not holding nothing against nobody. But I just wanted to voice my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. That exhausts the list of folks that had signed up. I would inquire if anybody missed an opportunity to sign up, if they want to be heard at this point, be happy to recognize you. Seeing and hearing none, I will now close this public hearing. And, you know, the point raised by Mr. Cash relative to the language that seems to restrict self-defense in your home and not the stand-your-ground self-defense generically, I think is probably a good point. The language is the same as what was adopted by many other counties. In fact, it's the same language that even was proposed by Sheriff Campbell. But, you know, I think self-defense is a defense to, you know, slaying of another, and it's not necessarily just in their home. So I would inquire of our counsel whether or not striking the words that say, including as self-defense in their home, just say, including self-defense.
That's fine. The language actually comes from the DC versus Heller case, and that's the part of the holding in the case that Mr. Young referenced. And that's what's recited there, is what the Supreme Court has upheld. That's where the language came from. But certainly, if you wanted to drop the end of it, there's no, I mean, that is what the holding was in DC versus Heller.
Well, it's safe language, but I'm not sure that the stand-your-ground statutes had been widely adopted at that time for the Supreme Court to consider, would you say?
That's correct. Again, if you want to drop it, I think that that's fine to do. That's just where the source of the language came from.
Okay. Well, is there any other comment relative to that?
Mr. Chairman, I think we pioneered a concealed carry policy in our county, so I think that would be very appropriate to drop the "in the home" because most of the folks, I have an idea here this evening, are concealed carry permit holders, as well as I am also. So, a lot of us are. So I think it would be very appropriate. If legal doesn't seem to have a problem with it, I would be for... If legal doesn't seem to have a problem with it, I would be for your, your recommendation there.
We will incorporate that change in the proposed resolution. Is there, are there any further comments?
I have some.
Okay. I'd like to make one comment for Mr. Scott over here. Very valid point that you have raised here this evening, and I believe it was Benjamin Franklin says, "We have a republic if we can keep it." And that's the question that we have here this evening. Can we keep it? We're all going to have to work hard to keep our government intact. Thank you.
Mr. Hap.
Mr. Chairman, I just have a couple of things. Our, our goal when this started, ladies and gentlemen, was always to consider and, and just reaffirm our support and defense of the Constitution in its entirety, specifically concentrating on the Second Amendment. I want to say we respect and appreciate all views that we have heard over the last several weeks and tonight especially. We did a, we did an in-depth due diligence period, working with legal, the sheriff, I want to say citizens around the county, some of our elders around the county, people that we as politicians trust, you, the citizens, weighed in with us over the last several weeks. Our legislators on the federal and state level all advised us, and, and we come up with a consensus, working with the sheriff, we didn't like the word sanctuary, because it has a negative connotation to it on a national basis. So we wanted to mention that. And so this resolution's always been, with all due respect with everyone here, to reaffirm our support that we got you back. We elected officials in this county, in this state. We support the Constitution. We all took oath, at some point in our life, a lot of us died defending it. So I just wanted to say that. And I want to say, I want to quote Ronald Reagan to some of Ken's points and Mr. Renninger. If we ever forget that we are one nation under God, then we will be a nation gone under. We, the people of this nation, have to make sure at the ballot box that that quote never happens. So I want to say that again. We, the people, have to make sure that Ronald Reagan's quote never happens. United we stand and divided we fall. We've come here tonight, we've agreed to disagree respectfully, we've made a minor adjustment that was recommended. I just want to say we appreciate the input. We have your back. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hap. Before I ask for a motion, I'd just like to say that a lot of the issues we've discussed are complex ones. They don't fit on a bumper sticker. They don't fit, you know, there are no simple solutions.
That are wrong.
They aren't able to be expressed adequately in a 140-character tweet. These are issues that when you see an opinion issued by the Supreme Court or the Court of Appeals are pages and pages of dense and deep thought about the Constitution and the fact situations that are presented to the court. So what we can do, as simple as it is though, is to reaffirm our support of the Constitution. As has been mentioned, a lot of kids in school just have not a clue about what's in the Constitution, what's in the Declaration of Independence, and what are in the Bill of Rights and the subsequent amendments to the Constitution. You know, what's enshrined by that Constitution is the rule of law. That's what separates us from so much of the rest of the world. Most of the rest of the world is, and I've seen it, and you wouldn't want to live there, is the rule of the gun, not the rule of law. But what protects our rule of law is that Second Amendment. So it doesn't hurt to reaffirm and to highlight for everyone's education and edification about what our government at all levels is all about. It's about we, the people, whether you're sitting there or up here or in Raleigh or in Washington. What we've tried to do here locally, you know, there's been some problems that seem intractable, mental health, drug addiction, the lack of parental involvement in raising children that know how to be civil or know the Lord, you know? You look back and, and a lot of the genesis of those issues just has been mentioned several times, goes back there. What we've tried to do though is when it comes to at least, you know, these mass shootings that were highlighted, really, I think that's what's got everybody scared to death. And how do you address those kind of issues? Well, locally, what we've done is we've tried to reassure people by limiting the ability or the opportunity to inflict mass casualties in Aridale County. We've done that, as has been mentioned, by specifically amending our personnel ordinance to allow our employees of the county, properly trained and licensed, to carry a concealed weapon. And we note that on our county offices. So when, just as was noted, when somebody comes in, if they're, if they're casing a joint, you know, if they're looking for a weakness, whether they're a terrorist or whether they're just someone who has, you know, mental health issues, they're going to think twice because they're rational about how they apply that force. They look for the weakest, easiest targets. And so we want people to know that in Aridale County, if this is where you want to do this, you probably don't want to, because someone's going to be there, and you don't know who that may be. And so unfortunately, they'll go somewhere else where they've got, they'll go down the, down the interstate where they don't have those kinds of worries. We've also expended the funds in our school safety and security budget, which we are limited in. You know, we had a quarter cent sales tax referendum that did not pass to try to create funding stream to be able to secure our schools, to get state-of-the-art, you know, equipment for monitoring and all of that, and also to put an SRO in all our schools. That didn't pass, so we don't have the money to do everything we'd like to do. But what we've done in concert with the schools is we have purchased the door locks, the securing devices for every one of those classrooms, so that if someone is loose in a school, there, you know, you've got a place for kids to be secure and they can't shoot the lock off, they can't bust down the door, they're just going to be in a protected area. So you limit casualties that way. Mental health, you know, we have expended funds to set up a special, and Vice Chairman Bowles can give you all the particulars, but basically additional opportunities for people to get bed space in a transitory fashion, and that costs dollars, but we've done that in conjunction with partners in the process. And when you get to, you know, the problems of the heart and problems of the soul, you know, Aridale Statesville Schools is one of the few, and this is where I have to give a tip of the hat to our departing school superintendent, Brady Johnson, who fought for good news clubs administered by Child Evangelism Fellowship, to be able to be in our schools and provide an opportunity for kids who've never heard the good news, who've never heard the gospel, who've never had the opportunity to, to see that there's a different way to live your life and to live your life for the Lord. And so those are the attributes, I think, that you see in Aridale County that set us apart from others. I think we can be an example, but it's, it's multi-pronged, it's multiple paths to achieve that there's no single, as you would call it, a silver bullet. There's no single way to solve all these societal issues, and it takes people of goodwill and faith to work together across the aisle with, because at the end of the day, I don't care whether you're a Republican or whether you're Democrat or whether you're independent, we're all neighbors, and we need to remember that. And we may have differing opinions, but we can agree to disagree agreeably. You know, this county, I have to say, and I could go on a long time, I'm sorry, but you know, my roots in this county go back to the 1750s, from the northern, all the way from Hunting Creek and Captain Andrew, Captain Andrew Carson and Major William Gill buried up there, to Fourth Creek, to Snow Creek, Private Adam Lawrence, to, all the way to Mount Morn, and Captain James Houston wounded at the Battle of Ranssoursmill fighting loyalist militia, and having to hide from Cornwallis when he came across the southern part of Aridale County and had his father-in-law's home burned. If you want to see what was going on, watch the film, The Patriot.
Yes.
You know, so defending our rights is damn important to me, because it's in my blood, and it's in all of ours blood, whether you've got roots that go back 250 years or whether you have roots that go back 25 days. People come to Aridale County because of what they see as our values. They make choices. They can go anywhere in the world, and they come to this county, and we're blessed to live in this little corner of the world. I'll take that as a cue to shut up. Okay, at this time, I would ask if there's a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion on behalf of this board, the sheriff, the other elected officials here tonight, and the citizens of Aridale County, that we approve with one change, dropping in their home, this resolution as presented tonight in support of the Constitution of the United States and declaring Aridale County as a constitutional rights protection county.
Motion by Commissioner Hap. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like, sign. Motion carries unanimously. We have some little cleanup stuff to take care of, but you may have other places you want to be. Thank you. Thank you.